Okay, I would like to call the board of this special, very special board meeting. For twenty twenty five, of the Board of Park Commissioners of Lake Bluff Park District. Uh, John, can I please get a roll call?
Yes. Uh, we'll start with the Parks and Beach Committee. Uh, uh, committee member Cole. Committee member Fuentes.
Eric.
Committee member Patterson. Chair Beeler.
Yeah.
Okay, now we'll do a roll call of the board.
So there being no form.
Yes, so there's no form, so we've.
That meeting is not being held.
Basically, yeah, correct. So we want all the Parks and Beach Committee meetings.
Showing up.
And in a conversation with the attorney, it seemed like we were fine if we didn't have a form of the committee. Uh, but with different form of the board, we could still move forward with the meeting. Had it been reversed, we didn't have a form of the board, we wouldn't be able to move forward, but in this scenario, we can. Uh, and still keep our, uh, what's on the agenda.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Beeler.
Here.
Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Anko here, Commissioner Well.
Yeah.
And President Grayfield Terror.
Um, can I please have a motion? To approve the general as core of the park for me.
So moved.
Second? John will help us.
Commissioner Beeler.
We allow, we're not.
Just, it's, it's just approving the, uh.
Oh, perfect. Yes, okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Anko, yes, Commissioner Well.
Yes.
And President Gray.
Yes. Uh, now it's time for statement of visitors. We have no visitors here. Are there any online?
There are no guests online.
No visitors online. Uh, so now we'll go to verbal communication staff, please.
Well, you don't have any, uh, other verbal communication person.
Okay, are there any commissioner comments? Okay, I just, I wanna thank you all for showing up. Uh, Tim, thank you for showing up, and we've discussed your role tonight, and, and please, you know, I, I will recognize you every time you want to speak. So that we can have this discussion among all of us, which was a really important discussion. Um. The name of our village is Lake Bluff. So, to me, that says a lot. Um, and probably our most important asset. Not our most popular asset, but our most important asset is our lake and our beach, brother. And, uh, we are here tonight to get the ball rolling on a program for what we're going to do to take that asset in the coming years. Jennifer, do you have any comments before we get into the formal agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So. Having said that, um, we wanna go and discuss the plans for the beef beach and bluff erosion control. Um, and I've asked Jennifer, Jennifer was, is taking the lead on this as our Parks and Beach Committee Chair and as our longtime Parks and Beach Committee Chair and as former president, spent a lot of time with him. Um, so. The floor is yours.
Take it off. Uh, please excuse me, because usually when I hear these summer cold, I have a very nice whiskey and cigarette voice. I just sound like I've got my head let's inhale. So if you need me to speak up for any reason, let me know. Uh, before we get into this, I wanted to really kind of make this more of a discussion with everybody as to what the beach means to you, and then to be able to ask you guys to participate as well, please, because, um. I look at the beach from three different ways. I look at it from uh, an ecological standpoint of the, the lake itself. I look at it from, um, an economic standpoint as to what we have to spend and what we have the money to keep, and from an emotional standpoint. So, straight out there as to what the beach means to you.
So I would agree with what Paul, his opening comments was, that it probably is our most important asset.
Right.
And.
It was voted as the number one amenity in the last community survey for the, for the community.
People love it, people use it. And what it means to me, I guess, is to maintain and getting ahead of knowing that it's probably gonna be expensive, but what can we do to get ahead of major erosion? You know, or we have another twenty nineteen storm.
It's a most important asset, it's a notable amenity, trying to get rid of all erosion.
Community gathering spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of our trustees and the friends mentioned that he defended a company function at the beach that was held in one of the shelters. And that's when he decided to move, wanted to move to this community, based, based on that experience. I think being a, you know, community located on you know, on the, on Lake Michigan here, which is just, you know, benefited in the draw for a lot of residents who don't wanna live here specifically for that. I think we heard one at the, uh, North Shore Water Reclamation District. The one person that had mentioned that they had moved here for the beach because their, the trouble weren't in the school, it's right here. Uh, but they moved to Lake Bluff specifically to be at the beach. They weren't happy because it was partially closed from the project, but yeah, but it was another one saying that's why they moved here.
Rob, potential residents.
I, I think the beach is prototypical Lake Bluff. When we look at our beaches in the area, Lake Forest, behind among them. You know, our beach here was the hipper gem. It's not fancy, it's not, you know, in any way over the top. It's just a really nice facility. It's a really nice beach, and it's friendly, and that to me is, is what Lake Bluff offers.
Accessible, it's very accessible.
And I think, so just to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, it is natural, you know, it's not, without all the bells and whistles, it's a very natural beach, and I think a lot of residents like it that way, you know. You go to Lake Forest, it's concrete and brick and steel and, you know, huge remnant. Well, ours kind of has that charm as a more natural beach.
And it has bad sound. Wait, we're on purpose, aren't we?
What did you say here?
Let the minister try to lie. Like Carrie doesn't like our saying. Oh, there you are.
So, you're a longtime listener.
I, I think it's a travel. I mean, I can only echo what you've said. I mean, it's a very precious resource to be on Lake Michigan, you know, as opposed to many other suburbs, so I think the beach is, uh, is one of the primary attributes of Lake Bluff. And then the sticker that has the dog and the, the pavilion or the, kind of listed featured the beach rather than
Yeah.
the dog.
The block it does, it's, it's a block, isn't it?
It kind of, it's, I mean, it's kind of metaphorical, but.
It is supposed to be the block and the lake.
Right.
What's in the parts of the block, not, not the building, but the parts of the block.
Okay, yeah.
It's a canyon, you have to turn around.
Well.
Tell it. Six o'clock in the morning.
I actually like a peaceful down there at six o'clock.
Peaceful. Love that. Good to Jim.
Yeah, I think we were down there last week. We mentioned having our next staff meeting at the beach, if we've not done.
Okay.
This is anger staying venue.
This is definitely one of the most utilized assets that we have. Just this summer, we've had over seven thousand people that have heard of visiting the beach during beach operations.
How many?
Seven thousand.
Wow, that's residents and non-residents?
That's residents and nonresidents.
So when you say relapsed, what does that mean? That that's just an easy number? Did you say relaxed?
No.
Oh. You utilize it.
It was peaceful.
He said it was peaceful.
Yeah, peaceful. What did you say?
I said it was, uh, utilized, when utilized.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I, I love that the pictures that you have in your, you know, some of the pictures you have in your presentation.
Yeah.
Of where it'd be for us during really bad periods of erosion and the storm. And I, I just, I mean, I think we gotta do what we can do to not have that happen.
Well, did I read the strike that the beach in the sixties was closed or?
Well, okay. Like, why here? It's, because, I mean, everybody, everybody has a different feeling about beach. I mean, for me personally, you know, but. One of my very first memories, and my daughter now is thirty-three, um, of going down with her, Miss New Mom to the beach and sitting in the sand. And just, that's where she first kind of went out of play, got introduced to the water. Every year we would go down and pick up, um, our beach glass. And she saved it all during the years, and she makes family frames now. So when there's a picture of something important, it's all the beach glass that flashes in the mirror. So, and so it's like not what we want. So, alright, so getting into the, what we get through, um, could you do that side, please, Jennifer? For, okay, thanks. So I wanna look at, um, I think the history of the beach, so to feel where we came from. That'll give them ideas and where we need to go, uh, what causes need to come beach. Beach erosion, what causes it, and what we've done so far, where it doesn't, what our neighbors have done so far, and then where we're gonna develop next steps. That's fine, then we talk. So, a little bit about the history, everybody can identify the Kelly kids, I think they're called. Um, this sounded like the, um, gang of the time that, I mean, I'm not a people. But those are, I mean, look at Bluff way back when. Next slide. Alright, so important things to know, um, the village was founded in nineteen eighty-five. At the time, it was called Lakefront Beach, and according to the district museum, nobody knows what it morphed into Sunrise Beach, but that's what we call it today. Um, as early as nineteen twenty-two, in twenty-two, um, that's when the sewage was pumped out of the village and pumped out to our lake. Uh, in nineteen twenty-five, as we know, our district was formed. In thirty-two, that's when the ownership of the beach was transferred to the auspice of the Lake Bluff Park District to tend to it and to have as part of our assets. As I said, they became Sunrise Beach. Nobody knows where, you know, Sunrise Park became Sunrise Beach. There used to be all that. Alright, um, so a couple of things that impacted our district. In nineteen oh-six, that's when Red Lake Seaball Station was starting to be built as well as their boat harbor that was out there. So think about it this way. Um. The wave is coming down the stream. Okay, so anything that they have to sort of post is going to in some way impact the Lake Bluff beach. So that affected what was happening, um, becoming onto our vision, Lake Bluff. In nineteen twenty-three is when they started to make break fronts with the naval station. So that definitely impacted the way that sand was coming through. In nineteen fifty-four, the power plant was built and then changed water flow to our beach. And sixty-five, yes, the beach was closed due to contamination, because since twenty-two, we've been pumping everything that was gross from our village right into the lake. Um, in nineteen sixty-eight, that's when North Shore Water Reclamation, which was formerly known as North Shore Sanitary made proposition. We can either build a sanitation facility at the end of Prospect Avenue, or we can put it on your beach, your choice as to how you want to address this. And property values, even that, given what they were, um, the decision was made to use the beach problem. Somebody posted this and alerted me to this, as I just love this picture. Um, somewhere around the nineteen sixties, we didn't have a pier.
Yeah.
And it was paid out, so.
No, okay, so.
Good stories. Okay, um, where people talked about, any of you who've been a resident in Lake Bluff around the time, talked about getting their Tencent Archie comics and going out and hanging out there and snow fishing and getting way too sunburned or going out with your family late at night, laying up underneath stars and watching the beach from there. So it sounds very lovely, very romantic, but I've also heard the story that that's where the sewage pipe was. So the joke was, can you deer any new kid in the neighborhood to jump above the end of the pier because there could be something float there, so. Um, but in nineteen sixty-nine, uh, that's when Lake Bluff Park, as you can transfer the asset of the beach road and that portion that began with Sound Beach to the village. Because the village then worked with North Shore Water Revelation to build the treatment facility. And so in nineteen seventy-five, we finally had water that was clean enough to have passed tests, so that people who go back and swim, um. It's funny, because people talk about the dead ill wives. If anyone remembers them, okay. They're pretty horrible, pretty smelly, but the ill wives are something entirely different from what was getting into the water contamination. By nineteen, oh, excuse me, by twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollar Secretary of State grant um, that allowed us to rebuild the stairs and the access to the beach. And the friends contributed about fifteen thousand dollars of that to help with everything that was done to improve accessibility to the beach. And twenty twenty-five, that's when we just finished our, uh, one thousand gallon, excuse me, one million gallon, uh, underground tank for North Shore. Alright, so right now, these are our partners. And it's important to know who our partners are, not only the fact of how we operate, but also what would give them the future and finances and everything else. Um, obviously, the village of Lake Bluff is a partner. North Shore Water Revelation is a partner, Lake Bluff Yacht Club is our partner. Open Lands to tend to the bluff and the native grasses, and the community church, so our, I get it. Okay. So everybody else uses the beach. These are people that with whom our organizations have values.
So, wait, Jennifer?
Yeah.
So, when you say partner, so for example, community church, do they contribute to revenues? Or when you just say partner, define?
We, we have an agreement with them in one way, shape, or form to be able to use or have assets as part of the beach. So the community church has their services down there during summer, but they also, instead of the financial contribution, they want the A T P.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so.
They still pay for, uh, drivers for the A T P.
Add.
Yeah, just making service happen for the A T P.
Yeah. And so, I could say partners in some ways, but there's some financial trade partner that for, um, that are for everybody, for everybody. Okay, so this is giving you the words of view as to what's, what's ours and what's the village of. So red is the village, the village has leased the land underneath to North Shore Water Revelation. And the yellow is down there leased to Lake Bluff Yacht Club. And I saw something recently he did. Is, is there anything to do there?
I did see that.
The village.
They had something on the agenda. I, I didn't see, I didn't read one of the laws. It proposed amendments to their, every member of one of them. What was that last week?
Okay, yeah, I can say that again. You're out of time. Have you heard anything more about, okay? Because before, it was always very, like, well, loose, nothing formal. And then with the change with North Shore Water Revelation, this is the first time that there is a fee that's made charged by, uh, the village to be on cover. I think, it's time. Okay, so then back around, now to go into the financials of what it takes to run Sunrise Beach. Next slide. Alright, I pulled this directly from our twenty twenty-five. I got you, so you guys know this, right?
Of course.
Okay, the walking, no, um, so we lose, uh, over a hundred and fifty thousand every year for the beach. Why do we do it? Because of all those reasons that we have up there. Uh, so the non-resident duty fee seventy-six five, the dog beach badge for residents and non-residents total over just a notch over six. Uh, shelter rentals seventy-five hundred and sailing program twenty-eight four. Okay, that's everything that we bring up to the beach. The budget, uh, the sand nourishment, replacements, supplies, people a thousand, security, eighteen-five. And I know this has always been, I will interject, my personal belief, this is a voting contention with maybe, because we provide the security, we pay a hundred percent of the cost, but it's protecting village and North Shore Water Revelation. My person. Uh, lifeguards, hundred and fourteen thousand. Okay, so as I said, here just started, so we have agreed this with the community church and the U C B. Uh, the Lake Bluff Yacht Club for the beach and the, or the beach help and for the boats that they have down there. And with Lake Bluff Open Lands, because they help take care of the native grasses, um, we do the bluff, right?
Wait, can you go back for a second, buddy?
Yeah.
So, is this my math? I just wanna be sure. So, everything that's voted adds up to a hundred different stuff, but don't we offset that with the revenue?
Yeah, yeah, I, if you want, I pulled the pages right here from the, uh.
Well, you can just.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I just pulled some of the juicier things. I didn't pull everything that was in there, because there's beach management fees, there's the wireless, and I saw that sort of thing. I just pulled the big things that we. Yeah, fine, thank you.
There it is.
Bye, okay. Alright, so. It's important for us to spend that money and to be able to pull from other um, revenue that we have for the beach, or excuse me, the park district field was paid to the beach, but let's take a look at the evidence with erosion, um. That little picture was, I believe, the chimney of a house.
Yes.
Here, doll, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's north.
Yeah.
Just, just north that far.
Correct, pretty far.
Is that correct?
Close to, yeah, it just fell in a couple of years ago, so. Alright, next slide, please. Alright, um, talked a little bit about water pollution, but as I said, this is active show and tell. And, you identified what those were at one time? Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay, for the people up and down the block who were trying to keep their bluff sustained, um, that's what they use to prevent the beach erosion or bluff erosion. They were, they were covered down, they were, it breaks down, um. And you guys have been fueling Remar, uh, with the H. Um, all sorts of stuff, and we're guilty even to, I mean, our district years ago pushed all of its debris into Lake Michigan. But this is what we want to have. Um, the other contributing factor, uh, light levels and coastal erosion. And this is where, um, we got the pictures, I'm proud of you, but I'll kind of indicate here. Beach engineering one-on-one. When you have sand clear, it's held by a bedrock and then played. Once the sand leaves and the play is exposed, and the play is moved by wind, moved by water, once the place gone, you can't replace it. It's the way that our beach was formed, and there's nothing that you can put back. You can't put back more play. The play is on, you could always put more sand on top of it, but that's what makes you lose your beach. Okay? Alright, um, okay, the beach levels, um, we've been very fortunate over the last couple of years because we have low rain, low snow, and it's affected our water levels. We have a lower, so we have more beach exposure. Uh, but for all of us who would care, and if you're in twenty nineteen, you know, we got. And it's going to happen, it's something, it's just, it will happen.
And Jennifer, if I can intervene, when I spoke with someone at the Army Corps of Engineers who was looking after these issues, what he was saying, and I think if I remembered my college statistics, you could see that the highs are getting higher, that the trend is up.
Yeah.
There are up years, there are down years, but the basic trends for the highs to get higher, and for highs, highs to get higher. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking very highly, I'm.
But yes, you're, you're right, it's, which become, become more severe or more dramatic.
And the lowers are higher.
Yes.
Yeah, whole trend of these.
That is global warming, yeah, is that a global warming thing?
Part of this global warming, a lot of Lake Michigan water, well, first sun comes from rain, and we're getting heavy, you know, typically heavier rainfall. And then there's more runoff from Canada to Lake Superior, and then throughout the Great Lakes.
Yeah.
So, okay, so if you keep saying we're kind of holding our breath because right now we're in a downward trend, who knows if it's gonna go below the, uh, line again, but it will happen.
Perhaps it's getting slow, yeah.
Okay. Was it about two, two feet on where the other?
In terms of.
I just couldn't see it, well, I guess I could look at my back.
As to.
The, yeah, while, yeah, the variation from.
Yeah.
Top, it's like four feet. Just like a really slow moving tide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The. Uh, remnant and sunrise date. And so, back in nineteen seventy-six, uh, we had a hundred and eighty-nine feet of steel groin that was north of, with our shelter. And that's still there today. In eighty-seven, it was a two-point-three million dollar failed referendum to, uh, address Sound Beach and install breakwaters. In nineteen eighty-eight, we received, uh, we funded two hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, for three hundred and thirty-five feet of armory stone on North Bluff, and that thirty percent is contributed was by the Army Corps of Engineers. So this is do you want to see the lake exhibit from the district museum? Okay, when, when you see it, and you see what North Shore Water Revelation was able to contribute, it was one of those things, okay, that's why community partners are good to know. Because then you kind of look as to who has money, who responds, who has a stake on the end of the beach. Uh, ninety-one, ninety-two, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two breakwaters uh, for Sound Beach. We funded it internally with a non-reverend budget. In two thousand, two thousand one, we had two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in state of the law grant for armory stone under the beach. And then put the remnant there at the end of the groin. And in twenty twenty, that's when North Shore Water Revelation repaired, um, their envelope lot because of the nineteen twenty-ninth store. And then we, from the park district, said we would have had an additional two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of stone because North Shore said they would only go so far, so high, and we said, while they get the equipment down there, we will go further.
Yeah, we were able to do that under the, uh, the emergency, uh, permit that was being used by, uh, uh, by North Shore Water Reclamation District, instead of having that our own permit. And they extended the same unit pricing to the park district that they had made out and received for their project. So we were able to add eighty feet for that amount in kind of a short amount of time, which to really protect mostly, you know, the South Beach, so the park district.
And, and if I can add, there was a, uh, an attempt on the part of the village in the park district before North Shore Water Reclamation District went through with its project to get the North Shore Water Reclamation District to pay for most of the cost of this large plan that a, uh, had put together on, on the basis that most of it was going to be protecting North Shore Water Reclamation District assets. And so the idea was they were gonna pay for most of it, and we would pay a little bit here, the blue picture a little bit there. And North Shore Water Reclamation District said, no.
Well, they should, it's past, yeah, they've already done their renovations down there and their, uh, the all tank, so they're done.
And they did, we met with them before they did the project, but they the executive director told me what they were doing was all they were planning on doing.
Yep, forever.
For, yes, that's, that's all they had planned for, for.
Yeah, because I think a lot of things were held off. It's, it's a good discussion, that's something that's gonna happen with their, um, building their facility down there, or making their facility, and the timing Building their facility down there or making their facility and the timing did not converge. So those, that's everything that's been down there and we still give those really attractive steel performance, uh, of speech. Oh, I promised you this, and I don't think I gave this to you very well, because I was going to play Sarah and love on our central.
You see, I just know where the pictures in the page.
Yeah, for all of us who came here and lived through it, it was horrific, it was terrible. Um, and there was nothing there could stop them, but you could see here from this picture. What happens when the sand is washed away and start seeing what's underneath sands. This is the flow from South Beach to the parking lot, this is how much shoot of everything going up to. Um, uh, the end of the beach road, um, this dog, right? Dog beach doesn't put us absolutely, and, and everybody probably remembers there was a time that dog beach wasn't dog beach. It was just a niche, it was just all a part of the local park district, but because it became so. Uh, rocky and difficult to navigate and narrow word, it became dog motion. I don't, is that a current year? Now, what year that maybe happened?
Well, I started.
Last fifteen.
Oh, when the.
Dog beach be get dog beach.
Oh, when it became though, it took another. Before twenty thirteen, that's the nineteenth year.
Or twenty thirteen?
Yeah.
Right, so twenty plus years.
And, and there were two storms.
Yeah.
There was the Halloween storm.
That was, I thought it was nineteen, and then twenty twenty was January.
No, the Halloween storm was a couple of years before twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, and that, I think is January twenty twenty, or like the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty mark. Yeah.
So that's why for sure, they'll follow this one.
Go back.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay, everyone's got a picture, they, they've got the idea. Alright, so this is kind of what we have is what we have already, you're something down the late time. Next slide.
Next slide, yeah.
Um, uh, hey, you have this as a video, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
I sent it to you.
Okay, alright, uh, there is, uh, a video online that shows what had come parked in with Rosewood Beach. Um, it's beautiful because it's kind of a, uh, aerial, uh, from outside of the beach. Uh, they had fourteen point five million, um, and they had a combination of Army Corps of Engineers money and tribal donors. And they, uh, developed three coves, a board block. Uh, there was a, there's a beautiful ravine that goes down to the beach, it's just gorgeous what they did. Uh, to put that together, and they got a learning center down at the beach and their garden house is. You've wanted to get yard, it's just beautiful to talk. Alright, can I have this slide? Even with the Army Corps of Engineers, planning all this, everything that they've done.
Next slide, Jeff.
This is what you have in twenty nineteen. This is their old, forever, we've been brought, this is how large the beaches, this was their, um, uh. Yeah, their, our shelter was here and their, uh, learning center was here. This is what he had with people's, it's fun. So even, you know, with the best planning.
So question though, did, did they study, because I'm most curious about what they did that was actually protected? Because it looks like there was, you know, it wasn't all washed away.
Yeah, no, they had those wonderful armor stones.
Okay, so that's, that might be the key, right?
It's a good question, because that, that was one way to look at it.
What they had, they weren't too happy with the work that was done with the Corps of Engineers, that was a lot of work that were being. Um, for the erosion coming in, a lot of that washed out, uh. And then the storm, you know, just due to the heights there, there. Um, because I know as a director down there, beach one time, and with Lake Forest too, to look at theirs, um. So, uh. Either there's, their revetments weren't as high, like sports filters up, you know, do that, they're much higher, they can stick out of the water, um. And I would say, uh, parts of it's a little bit more natural, like our beach.
Yeah.
But they did have a lot of, uh, a lot of damage, millions of dollars of damage, uh, from the song, for their beach.
Is revetment the general word we're saying for?
Breakwall.
So, I'm sure, because we were more precise for engineering like.
That's bound balancing surgery.
Okay, so, Lake Forest, uh, addressed there, it's back in nineteen eighty seven. Uh, and it's an eight point five million dollar bond, almost three hundred thousand dollar private money that was put into there, but. We're all familiar with Lake Forest Beach, we know how different it is from Lake Long Beach. Yeah, to say Highland Park Rosewood is probably closer to ours than I kind of feel. Um, because they, you know, they've got more natural grasses and out of park, Lake Forest is, uh, it's. Uh, boardwalk is far away from the beach itself and the sand itself is different. We have sand that is associated with what beach would be, then it was a sand castle, it's all extensive. Uh, but the horse beach is birds eye, which is pretty granular and we get a little sand castle.
I know, it's bad.
But it stays, it doesn't get washed away, it's just, but they built everything with, that's new shirt from nineteen eighty seven. Uh, with, you'll involve them there, revetment.
So we're now for the twenty nineteen storm instead, sand instead?
Next picture.
Sounds interesting.
Alright, next slide, who's? Yeah, that's their board block in area with this, that twenty nineteen storm. Okay, so it got them too, but not to the same extent that we did. Yeah, but then also they did their, um, broken collapse.
What's on the left?
What?
What's on the left?
This is, this is twenty nineteen.
Lake Forest.
This is like.
That is Lake Forest, okay.
Yeah, and that's the force because that's their, uh, that's their, yeah. And so, again, showing even with the best plans. Something's going to happen, you see, the whole point is with the best plans in place to try to diminish. The amount of impact that's on the storm and stuff like. And the last one that we have, that's I'm pleased with. Okay, uh, signed and state beach park, which is really even quite dominant with what we've done. And I have the next slide. Um. Obviously, they have different, um, impact than we do. Because we're tiny little like wealth and we've got our wealth, we've got our natural grasses and everything else. Much bigger investment, obviously, there, they've got, currently, they've got a weapon, they've got a lot of thickened staff. The state is very interested in protecting, so that's why seventy three million dollars was slated for their revetment. And I know it's kind of hard to see, but because they have four thousand acres of shoreline. These are the things that have looked, you know, as to, they've got nesting pods for terms. They've got submerged quiet garden, they've got a lot of niches in scrub. And they've got a little bit of a cavity down there, so everything was done to really make this. More ecologically interesting to what was going on. Uh, but one of the things that they also get too, was they had eleven million dollars that was just spent on modeling. Of the waves and the sand action. So, yeah, you can spend a lot of money, but that's when we have seventy three million that you can, power both of the part of it to be able to say. This is what we want to build, covers the impact of it.
And we, can, are they willing to share that? That modeling?
Modeling, yeah, yeah, well, here, here's, here's what we have now, I mean, this slide, listen. Okay, so they did, it's two different projects, uh, one was two hundred and fifty thousand tons of rock. To change the sand patterns, so some of these breakwaters are completely submerged, some are partially above the water. But they had changed the sand pattern, because again, we're talking from up north, coming down this way. And how do we keep the sand on the beach and not leave our beach? And the other project that they had is ten thousand tons of rock to create three, seven hundred fifty of rubble dishes. To say, change the way the patterns, and those are currently being studied by, um, my N R for their coastal management. To see how this will change the way the action of the beach, because they put it in place, they modeled it, and now they're studying it in real time. But. That's the really cool part about it is, and then talking to like George Russell and other people about this. Here's this huge brand that they got, really the rock, I mean, it's just a bunch of rock that they've been down there. But the really interesting part about it is the fact that they have developed this bird sanctuary. So then they have the waiting folders, they have the terms, they have birds that are coming down to nest there, they need it, ethologically interesting. They have, um, the lower part of the rock that they develop for the fish to come and have a fish capturing. And bring that in, that's what makes it more exciting and more, and more people really come to, to. And so people are going off their burden on chain, all of that sorts of things.
What is their annual budget, I think?
Their annual budget to continue this, that I don't know. I'd have to believe.
It's a thing.
Oh.
And it is, they engage, and it's not, it doesn't have lifeguards, it's not staffed. Uh, so I'm sure it's the agents of it, uh, and that would probably be probably what we did. There has been a lot of, uh.
And several sepoist of a ton of rock.
There's been several groundings and several near groundings. And so there's some concern that this is, you know, actually at the track of nuisance, so people. See these breakwaters, I think they can swim to them and try, about halfway to them and decide it's too far, but, uh. It's, it's too far back too, so they've had some work in, in trouble and some groundings there already, since this has been pleaded. Again, a lot of guards too, that's part of the challenge.
Uh, I, in these couple of articles that I pulled, I don't see anything about what your budget is, but. Okay, can I have the next slide, please? Alright, so that leads to, what do we, uh? The Ecom study. Uh, this was commissioned, we had, uh, in twenty nineteen, there were a number of different firms that were. Uh, reviewed and vetted by the park district and we came upon the Ecom. Uh, they were one of the firms that helped, uh, or excuse me, were instrumental in developing the Shenburi. Um, so been there, you've seen how that beautiful vista was out there, but think about Lake Michigan there coming up against the Shenburi. Uh, and that's one of the projects that this firm did. Uh, cost of study at the time was sixty thousand dollars, of which North Shore Water Recreation, Paul said. They were, yeah, more of a, um, financial thing, so they contributed seven thousand dollars for the cost of the study. This, for the base project was, uh, began, getting done, and there was a community beach panel. Uh, that was formed to address results of the study, to see what will you do next, uh, again. Again, um, it was twenty nineteen through twenty, uh. So, I think that's that round, um, can I have this slide, please? Uh, out of this twenty nineteen costs, we were available to three major areas, yes, there was the part of building another fear in here. Uh, South Beach and estimated cost of the notch over a billion. Southern Beach, one point two, also three, North Beach, one point five, and Dog Beach, uh, over one. To be able to, with the rest, and there, at the time. Was. To build up. The stones, there are the iron stones all along the beach, so really kind of changing up yet. Growing area, uh, instead of steel, putting in stones. Uh, water, um, there was a lot of talk at the time about what if we did one cove? What if we can only afford to do one, which would be the most viable? Um, there was talk at times to what's the one that we want to preserve the most, if we have, let the others go. I mean, a lot of different ways to be able to look at this. But as I said, uh, conversation did not continue because COVID hit. The world changed, and now we're here, we can't, yeah, and we're studying, and things get changed.
So about five million bucks to, I can't totally tell what, yeah, so this, sorry, so it's, basically, so besides the. So armor stones here?
Yeah.
And then, but this is a state, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not the actual work, I think that's, that's the.
That's in another one?
Oh, it's the, they're just saying it's not on this map.
Water levels, basically, this water levels, yeah.
So, it, it's.
Okay.
So.
We're supposed to.
Yeah, that shows.
Yeah.
The additional work to be done.
And this is on our website too, yeah.
Okay, so within these numbers.
Yeah.
Is there layer detail that talks about the priorities that you were just explaining?
On, on our website, um, you'll see each, uh, one of the, of those areas broken down as to what brings up the total cost.
Okay.
So I just do the overview.
Sure, and so, so did the committee get so far as to prioritize?
They started to.
They started to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's identifying, prioritize the work to the north.
Yeah.
Because they felt that that would help the rest of it, uh, primarily with catching the, uh. The, you know, the, the debris, the, the, uh, concrete debris, it's, you know, from the littoral grit, it's coming down, you know, the beach is. Jennifer mentioned earlier, everything goes, you know, from north to south. So it was, it was on this deal growing here, building up that first, uh, you know, rock for that incident. And I think it's, was in that plan, uh, but starting, starting with, with this area of major improvements there, that was. Kind of like the first priority.
Yeah.
There was a good state comments, it's put together a priority niche, did you see that?
And is it on the website?
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, everybody's on the website.
Yeah, whole thing.
Um. Well, we never really studied that in any detail, we never formally did plan it. Harder, like you say, to totally hit than, you know, in other issues. Uh. Like finding a good second.
I asked you why, but I will say.
A lot of, maybe.
That's what John coming up with, because of the relationship with Bill Weaver for me, um. He's been extremely helpful in working with John and taking to apply for different grants that. Come up, um, we're, don't, we don't fit for a lot of these, because a lot of these are different, um. They're not necessarily beach related or they're not necessarily heated, they're more ecologically based versus really trying to deal with erosion, so.
Yeah.
So.
So, yes, so we started with FEMA and just as you were saying, did him. It's harder to get funding for erosion for recreational beaches, you know, it's infrastructure protection. Which we are just trying to say, yes, this is infrastructure, we're trying to protect the, uh. The sanitary building and the access roadway to it, and for two beach, uh. So we applied for FEMA for a couple of years, along with them, um. We have not adopted the H and E or the answer, uh, mitigation plan that the county has. The park district don't adopt it, villages and cities do, um. So then there was some discussion whether we would have to be a sub app and under the village. Uh, I thought we can probably still apply, so we did, uh, for FEMA, uh, funding, a couple of years in a row, we did not receive them. So this, um, past, uh, January, we applied for some money to, um. To do a plan, it was felt that if we could have like a shovel ready plan, then we could go after funding. Um, so there was a revolving state, uh, a grant that we applied for, or we didn't receive that, so then we have applied. For, and we were working with a consultant, uh, Stan Tech, consultant. So then we applied for, uh, another state grant to do the, the planning and permitting for a project. And it was a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, be ten thousand. And it was a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, be ten thousand for participate, the rest coming state. Uh and that will give us a shovel ready plan and we could go start applying for state funding. Like with the uh the Illinois, potentially the rebuild Illinois fund that funded the uh the Illinois state beach project.
What and what is the status of that?
So we haven't. So that was supposed to be awarded over the summer, um I've reached out to them to see, I've not heard, we've not received sort of. Uh word on that, so I have reached out to them to check on the status, but. Not received a uh response yet.
Is it well with the FEMA, for example, is it normal to just you either get it or don't hear anything or they do you get?
Oh no, we we on FEMA, we would hear and and they would say, you know. Uh a couple of different things, whether you need this or that, again, they're they were more like infrastructure uh focused on their brands. Uh for the funding um. For the state, um I mean, I think we, you know, I I know through Amplifun, which is a. Online portal, I you know, our grant was received, uh and you know, we received confirmation of that back in May, but. Nothing says, so I mean, the state will reply when it when it happens, but they're just moving slow.
I I think the problem with with these grants now is that the federal government. We can forget about. It's just, it's just not gonna happen. And the army corporate engineers did tell me in fact, because they were working on. Effects with the state with the order of department resources and they said, that's horrible, that's finished, we don't have that much. So. You know, the state of Illinois is not exactly rolling and doing. And when you look at, as you said, John, when you look at a recreational beach. Uh.
Not populous.
We're not populous and we're also not, I mean, there are limited numbers of communities that have beachfront, which. You know, so in terms of North Chicago, does North Chicago have its own beachfront?
Um uh Boston Park does now, which is part of North Chicago and it's. It has a small beach, doesn't have a lifeguard, but it 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 get a grant to develop a small. A rustic beach.
But you know, there is the same going on where requirement, the fifty percent of grant money goes to less.
Advantage.
So potentially North Chicago, Whautica and some of the communities to the north are certainly less advantaged than Lake Park. Um. I I think when we look at funding sources. I think. The three on the right side. Community members and residents of both parts is what we need to be looking at. If we get grants for one of them.
You move to like Boris, you move in. Island Park, they've all get a private contribution.
Yes, they did, yeah.
I do think it's still worth pursuing just because I think we have. Um I've spoken with our legislators for the last couple of years about um you know, the need for erosion. Protections uh money or funding because they they just don't have that through IDNR. Very little, a lot and a lot of it is already brought up as nature based, they're looking for fish habitat, things like that, so uh. So I've been speaking with both a senator and say rep about, you know, more funding opportunities. Uh for the erosion, I also think we have a legislative advocate now that's helping us to get the grant funding that we weren't getting before. Through IDNR, so I think with that. With that person, their connections in Springfield um. You know, I do think it's still worth keeping that option. Open and pursuing that on the one track and then, you know, as you're saying here, there's other other three. Also.
I I put the beach management plan there on the top because that's what we have to develop first in order to be able to ask for funding. So we've had um. A beach management plans around the year, um the person beach talked about revising that. And trying to hold it in, um we will, we're probably going to have to hire. Uh a consultant to to be able to put that together. Uh so that that's our. First step in work and. And that's not this. Beach management plan is different from those because this is an erosion study plan.
And you're really well, I'm talking about beach capacity.
Yes.
You've in Lake Forest, it was, you know, it's eight point five million dollar bond, there's only three hundred grand. It's so obviously, there's only three hundred grand private.
That the yeah, but that was the uh.
Yeah.
And since then, they've had some very generous private donors who have helped.
Well, that's not out of the ballpark for us.
So yeah, there's for the park district, you know, you would have a certain amount that park district could finance, that's not referendum. Certain amount, not all of it, uh it it could, that's the option, the butt boards discussed this before that. That that also could be an option down the road, whether you wanted to go for referendum. You know, just for the beach to. You know, to attack some of that, but. Uh. You know, preparandums are a difficult difficult seller.
This environment, but that, I mean, we know that's an option, so that's okay. Because. Well, if you if you pull the last slide. It's a beach management plan. Um. I I guess it's really a question of. What do we do first? Because. Um. Paul, I'm discussing this, and this is why we're here today, because none of us want to be a. Maybe member or board member have a terrible Halloween store head and then everyone's asking you, well, why didn't you do it? Right, what have you done? Well, you know, last thing was Bill putting up some armor stone about five years ago. Where have you been? And it's, you know.
Well, I have a same question, actually. Okay, so so heart beach management plans just for a second. Are those who have been studying this, so you may need one of them, Jennifer, under. The uh recommendation that we do another study for sixty grand?
That's a lot.
I know, that's why I know, and then that's why for here, I mean, to.
I have a very strong opinion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now. I do not love. Engineering plans that are made by firms. That are going expecting to get the contract to do the open of work on a project.
Okay.
I do not believe that that is an objective way. A way of getting objective information. That you go to someone, and this is what we ended up doing with the wetlands, where we went to. An engineer firm told them, you're not gonna include you, you're not gonna get the. We want to know what you think of the engineering of plans and so on, but don't expect to get the. Uh. I've talked to a number of people who've been involved in projects like this. And this is a silly statement, because I don't have all the names and so on, but. You know, you talk to a lot of people and they will agree with you. If you want an objective view. And I think. It is worth. Going to another firm. Picking another engineering firm to come back and look at. Opportunities, needs. And revisit the whole plan, come up with something new.
Okay, so so my bigger question is, is six years made that much of a difference that we need to get? An updated study from whatever firm we got it from. Because if I'm a resident, I am wondering, we spent sixty grand on this study. And now we're spending another X amount, so what gives?
Well, what Jennifer was saying before. That High Park put a lot of money into their beach, like Ford put a lot of money into their beach. And storms came by and still caused tremendous thing. I mean, how many millions of dollars of damage after putting? Was twelve million dollars into.
Dollars in a twenty fifteen.
So, yeah, I think there's there's a real. Possibility that modern nature says, I don't care what.
Okay, correct.
So. Here we get, that's gonna be reasonable. And that we can afford. And that will do a good job, it may not do a best job.
Well, let's.
But we may spend a fortune doing the best job. And then it gets wiped out.
That's not my question though. Paul.
Well, and and that's why I listed all the things that we've done to date, because if we didn't have those.
It would be a lot worse. So so it's probably how about this, we could put it into low risk, medium risk, high risk.
Yeah.
Because there are, we know there's some low risk things as well, so the the harbor stones tends to. And I was doing some research with any Lake Michigan town and there's some southwestern Michigan by Saint Joe's, a couple. Of their communities. That. And I didn't bring it with me, I don't know how hard to get today, but I can send it to you all, that talks about these harbor stones as a. Like no brainer, that that will be, that tends to be one of the things that is good.
Yeah.
So, but I'm wondering, did the study prioritize and I what I'm hearing from you is that. It does prioritize it, the community.
The group starting to look at prioritizing.
Okay, so so then back to the question, do we need a new study in order? To validate what we already know?
Let's just update it now. Could I just update this one, refresh it?
That's a good question, we can go back to that and see what it would need to refresh it, I mean. I look to. What uh state each part did is something that's really exciting is to throwing the. Natural element into it of the birds and the fish and everything else. Would that get people more excited in our town about donating? Split for a referendum, that made them more excited, okay.
Cause that's something like that.
Right, right, right. I said, yeah, say it to me, cause that that allows, yeah, nobody wants to go out and say, oh. What?
That's the beach manager for the plan.
Yeah.
There were two things, so as they wrote in the control, there's a beach.
Yeah. But that was built into it, if we if we went back to AECOM. And asked them to, well, sure, let's help their. If you move into AECOM and have them updated, or we could look for a brand new. Uh erosion study.
I would just say too, uh so we didn't hire AECOM to do the dog beach stuff. In about twenty one, so we have that, that's also on the our website. Um then I would, I wouldn't build in the boat, the boat we, uh you know, as he was evaluating the debris and and. Uh updating and in in doing just, you know, options for that north end of it. Um I don't know that there would be a lot of benefit to uh spending money to update. The plan, because I don't think it's probably gonna change all that much, the same issues. That are happening now are happening then, there's gonna be difference in cost, uh but the armor stone was at a high price. Um according to bill two thousand nineteen, um so I mean, there's gonna be some. You know, some changes there, but I I don't know that it's worth spending a lot of money. Maybe other than you'd be able to, unless you just wanted to be able to tell the community, well, we did something, you know, we we. Updated the study to see what else, you know, we should be doing or if it's changed. Um. So I don't know if that's gonna really be, you know, spending much money there is gonna be a question.
I think we did, this is still valid.
I do, I think I think most of that is still pretty accurate and AECOM wasn't told that they were gonna get the job when they did the study. You know, so you could argue what.
It was it was implicated.
It wasn't implicated, I will hear the time so that. That could be and and yeah, then my recommendation would be, if you're working outdated, probably hire a different. Um coastal engineer for the evaluated and updated, you know, so then you might see some differences, but uh I I do think. Probably I and I've spent a lot of time with George, a long time with Bill Weaver, um you know, talking about the plans and and the effects. Uh and I I do think, you know, most of those issues are still the same issues and still be the same. You know, same approach to fix them.
Good. That's good to know.
We have five system concern. That. It was. The top of the line plan made. And then we could be throwing good money after bad if we follow through on top of one. I think this is the luxurious. Yeah. Pole start. Yeah.
Wait, 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 hold on, I I wasn't under the impression that. These recommendations, they should require the purchasing of apps harbor stone.
Oh, it's right.
Our our.
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 We, okay, I guess I'm just one, okay. Need to phrase this. So the priorities of. What is low fairly low risk, that would seem like the right focus for. Stage one, we'll say. Me in the plan would be medium risk and then or high risk, but we know we have to do something. Whether it's AECOM or I don't, you know, whoever it is, that the the. Priorities would still remain the same, the material is what can change. Am I, do you guys understand or am I?
Yeah, yes, yes and no, because if you're looking, yeah, okay. AECOM's plan was to build the armor stone, that is the arm, it's armor stone comes from. Um up in Wisconsin and higher and it's glacier will be, okay, hard by glaciers. Hard light glaciers and that's what we said, so for um.
Correction, okay.
Yeah, for for water uh piece erosion and for holding your sand on everything else. They did recommend this one to use for exercise sand. Everybody's, everybody thinking that, that we're gonna do that. Um but what they're also trying to do too is they tried a rubble, which is just building up a break front that's going to be. Deeper underneath water, but that's designed, that's a different plan. So to be impacted by doing something close visual there on the beach or putting something further out there to change the way. Surprisingly, I had this, which is very obvious, this was the study and putting together the matrix as to what everybody felt was fourth of the time. I mean, remember that I can.
In this study with the the cost of, you know, one one of them going by depending on each.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have the number of tons of the armor stone that's going to be in the associated cost? Does that? Three million to five million, is that change that much? We did the thirty foot piece of the South. I don't know.
It's a good question, I don't know. I think they were doing, oh, they did, they did by, I missed what you said, to do the backwards, because it's time for that um. A hundred forty breakwater, uh seventy five for the rubble, the other that. Um so we rolled backwards, as we say, a ninety one stone breakwater at that time was five hundred forty uh four thousand dollars.
Was how much?
Uh five hundred forty four thousand.
Oh, that was just one of the breakholes.
That's right.
I guess we're not gonna figure it out right now, but just finding out how much that same plan costs now.
I will say, uh when we hit the October uh Halloween storm. We we ended up by on a claim with uh Berdama and that was like one of the very first. And we did, we we got money to rebuild um. The one breakwater, the steel one that ran parallel to the parking lot. Of MSWRD. So back then, it you know, was it twenty seventeen or? Somewhere in that timeframe. That boy had huge like, uh it was this. The steel was all rotten away, it. It was very dangerous, because it was jagged inside, if a body could get swabbed from a rip right in there. So we had rebuilt that with armor stone. And I I remember when we did uh armor stone for MSWRD. The price did jump quite a bit, so going back and finding out like that price is probably significantly changed. Cause it wasn't as much when we did the the repair to the one point with Halloween storm and then. Three, four years later, you you know, for approved doing uh a higher law, regular law. For that MSWRD, so it it went on significantly, something definitely you would wanna look into. For that N S W R D, so it it went on significantly, something definitely you would wanna look into.
From what I'm hearing is that there's only one place to source harbor stone? Is that the thing?
I'm sure there are other places, but because they're bringing it down by gage. That's why. They bring it closer to the location.
They do it with the other one.
What?
With the Halloween one, uh Shavika, uh trucked it.
Oh, they they talked about.
Yeah, he talked.
Bring it down by gage by trunk there. But he might obviously give it.
But but that one, I I think they embarrassed the other one.
Good point. Can make a comment.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, if you look at the Highland Park photos. It looks like the armor stone. Well, some of it got pulled out. It's a natural check.
Yeah.
So. That'd be something I would be interested in is armor, is armor stone. Without steel. Uh steel wall effect or. When storms like we had in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, they were, when they're talking about doing that area to the north by Dog Beach, they were gonna build that on that steel groin that's there now.
Right. I mean, do you need steel to keep the armor stone in place? Those are the questions I would have, because it look, I mean, if you compare the two photos, it looks like. Center of stone is missing.
Yeah.
So I don't know that it's the B O and that is all.
Oh, sure, sure. That's why I agree. So that I wanna understand. Cause Highland Park was a great comparison for us of. When two thousand nineteen hit, what was left?
Yeah. And what they into.
Yeah, and then.
Now. Finance committee met last week.
Hmm.
And we went over the ten year budget project.
When did we spend that much?
So. I went through it all afterwards, we had a sash or something. Still we worked on, because we haven't incorporated cap or investment ground to, yeah. We're gonna be doing that this. Just to remind.
I'm ready. It won't be there. But um there's a, yeah, Thursday, Monday, no, Monday, uh.
By all, of this one. By twenty thirty four, so over the next ten years.
Yeah.
And we were talking about what kind of reserve our district should keep. In its balances. And Wes has been recommending twenty five to fifty percent. I took a forty percent threshold. Just cause I don't wanna give Wes everything he says. And they're gonna, uh in all seriousness, they're gonna let Wes and Joe gonna look at. How the cap flow was moved during the year and come back with a. A more concrete recommendation. In the next months, I guess.
Particularly in the the look, to start with lowest part of the year, which is.
So if we were a forty percent threshold. In our next ten years. We should have something like three million dollars excess funds above the forty percent threshold. For our spending. Over the ten years. So we first had ten years a long time and. Things happened within that ten years. All requirements come up that we find are really important. So how much of that, and that's something we're all gonna have to look at, how much of that three million dollars? If that's what, you know, something around that. Are we willing to look into? To be, now that includes however. In twenty thirty. Getting a new bond issue, non referendum tax levy of one and a half million. So we're really looking at four and a half million dollars over the next ten. But we can't spend four and a half million on.
The one and a half, the one and a half was a minimum three.
Was nine hundred and thirty, okay.
I'm gonna say, you know.
So.
A man that musician, why don't we buy the road death and the.
And that is, that is taking our. That is taking our, our non referendum. Tax levy. You know, it leaves us at zero, so we can't. We have, we can borrow some production after that, we can borrow some operating expenses. Um. So I think we we have to keep, you know, that four and a half million dollar number.
That's over ten years. Did you go so far as to? Four years? Three years, six years? Ten years?
Year by year, but it's. As soon as you get a few months down the road. Start to really actually prevent.
It's a ten year forecast, but. Wes and Joe said, you know, once you get past. Four or five years, it's. A real guessers.
Yeah, okay.
They're making some big assumptions.
Okay, so what's five years? Maybe that's a better. Well, I think what you're getting at is.
Amen.
Amen. So are we?
Five years, it's about eight hundred thousand.
So we're making, you know, just. Having, we're paying off now pretty aggressive payments for the. Bond that was just taken out for full and projects, that was a five year bond.
So by twenty thirty, we'd be in a better position for for an eternal fund.
Right.
Okay.
Right, is this, is this appropriate for a task force, or is this? Each and every, I mean, I know, so you're talking about how how do we?
I'm, how do we look at this? I I think what we need to do is.
Sorry. Okay, first of, really, I guess, to sign. Make make it as to if we're gonna look at erosion and make this a project. Say that we're gonna do it and say we're gonna do it over. Next period of years. Okay, and being kind of back into saying, you know, you're you're sorry. Whatever we're gonna do here, let's say five years, let's open, it's five years. Okay, if we do, yeah, we say. We're going to have this project in the next five years. Um. Start putting the costs in there as to if we want to. Prime it out again to another firm to update the vibes, tweak whatever. What are our goals? We're looking at erosion, are we looking at, you know, let's look at the whole plan. And then kind of limit it down ourselves as to what would be there. Um and then just really look at it. Practically and say. Do we need to go to a referendum? And is that something that we're ready to test? And will people support it? Or if we're not gonna do a referendum, it's out in the past as a referendum, what are we willing to do financially? And we'll get all those other folks that could possibly be our heart, or some things like that.
And what, what percentage are we counting on that? My reference failed in nineteen eighty seven.
Yeah.
Now, two point three million in eighty seven, still a lot.
Pretty heavy one, yeah. And we have another beach referendum since then. And. Where is, ready for numbers? When was the last beach management plan updated?
The the dock plan was done. Uh twenty one, September twenty one is completed, so that's the end of the north end.
The last best of that, that was.
Yeah.
That was twenty fourteen. Yeah.
Fall or twenty twelve or twenty fourteen.
Four, fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, so there's a baseline by which we update. If you're familiar with or. Don't say task force would. Um. Wouldn't put together a a current, yeah.
Uh, okay, so it's due to these guys, and I know, okay, we'll we'll use some euphemism for task force, but I think you need anybody. And that's my, that again, personal opinion, when I draw this in there. But again, John, I think you need, you need buy.
Yeah, I relate for me.
I think a task force, we should. I I I think you need other people to become invested in this because. Then it becomes more personalized, you get different kinds of.
I think you need. To get the community involved in what we're doing. Through community meetings. I think this is the most important thing we're gonna be doing as a board. And I don't see giving a task force the responsibility of coming up with this being. Appropriate. I think it's up to the board. And the board committees. We have a standing committee for parks and beach.
Yeah.
And. I think it's it's. Inappropriate to hand this to a group of individuals. Who were not elected. To come up with plans. And to make recommendations to the board. I think that's our responsibility. And. I think it was a problem before. And I think it would be a big problem.
Too.
That's what we were looking. Make the thought decision.
But we're in task force. There's also, I mean, there's, there's some. There's some expertise that's needed, and maybe we. If we have other third parties, but I don't know if we're really.
And you get professionals coming to set information. And now. And again, without going into detail. Get, if we need information, get professionals to provide professional. It's not.
Agree, so this is what we look.
Community goes another.
Yeah, I I disagree.
Cause we don't pay, I also don't need to decide.
We we don't have, I'm sorry, I mean, other than the board. We just don't have.
That's something.
And.
Say that, you don't know, you really don't know, we don't.
We 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 shouldn't be alarmed. First of all, if we had somebody who had the expertise. The virus was really professional, so they. We should be paying them, shouldn't say, well, you're a resident, you should do this work for free.
I don't think we have to say this.
Yeah.
I'm just really glad, but uh. But we took how how close, how close were we? When this, like before COVID, I mean, was this? I guess I missed that. I mean, were we really going to pull the trigger on it and?
They really came up to, because I mean, they were looking at. Uh they way, putting weight to different things like property damage, infrastructure, public safety, beach aesthetics, beach erosion.
Okay, yeah.
So so were they close? Yeah, they were pretty close because they. They were getting to the point of saying, okay, if we're going to. Break it down and look at. The priority issues, so South Beach that they ranked as the number one priority. For addressing the erosion. We didn't get to the point of funding, started the mine recollection.
Okay. Well, there is, is is that still, if if not that much has changed, is that still? The, is there, is that much changed that we wouldn't go with that that plan? I have to read that whole thing.
Well, that is John's saying, you know, isn't it that much has changed?
Not that much has changed, but I guess that's still the direction we want to go.
Well, let's see that that. I I'm gonna say that. It probably should be revisited just to see if there's anything technologically that's changed because of. If. For any reason, whatever's the other, it's state park. Is affected, not for any reason. That will be. And again, I'm not. I'm not saying, I don't know that I'm an engineer, I don't, just don't know, but I would just want to say. It's a workable.
Well, should we, so at least from a pricing perspective, should we just get? Not a formal bid, but. Is the price to do this, this whole plan now?
Okay, I can see it, we.
See, my my recollection is that. G tax was huge for them. We had no way of funding this.
Okay.
So we did the planning. And we had, you know, they put these priorities together. But the only thing we were able to fund was the thirty foot. On that South Beach.
Yeah.
Which was not even one of the top priority.
So that was A D T. Our A D T, yes.
It just looks like.
It's it's, it's not, it's a lot. Um. Well, we don't know how much that would cost now, is all I'm saying, you know, if we could.
And so there was no, there was no plan out of finance, our district didn't have the cost of that city.
Yeah.
So we couldn't borrow. Money, and there was never anything done. Or the welfare of them. Now, and and again, you know, when we joined the board twenty nineteen. And that's actually, this was started by the board that released to us. And then we actually, well, we actually. Got the study, we were on the board when the study was done. Um. And then twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So and then.
So was it, it's fully being your rent, okay.
So we did use that plan, you know, when we applied for all those people grants, you know, we used this as our shuttle ready plan, yeah. Uh to apply for those, um again, still didn't, would obviously get the grants, but um. I mean, A E com did have a really good reputation as a, as a good coastal engineer. Doesn't mean, again, you need to use them going forward. Um but, you know, so I think this study is a good study, whether, you know, it may be, I mean, give some these Cadillac options. Uh but, you know, I think there are uh valid elements to, you know, to erosion plan, so.
Wouldn't, couldn't they at least, as a side note, couldn't they at least bid on the program? Why couldn't they bid on? It wouldn't be an automatic.
Do you mean, do you want to develop the, build it?
Well, all this like, wants them to be totally separate, but I mean, it's an open data too, and that's down the road.
Yeah, that's not, it's whether they would be good because they have all this. Uh time invested already in that knowledge. Or, you know, as was stated earlier, they, you know, was making. Work of themselves, you know, so they're always looking at it, uh. But. Yeah, I think that uh. I could always reach out and just see, you know. If they could just refresh them up, what would this in today's dollars, what would this? Meaning, which I'm sure it's not quite that, but uh. You know, just to, I I don't think you would have to spend a lot of time. For charges, they've been actually very helpful in coming back, we've had a lot of. Phone calls, a lot of questions, and and they've spent a lot of time. But they have charges for, you know, answering questions.
I I don't mean to throw that A E com does not be honest with us, or that the work that they did was subsanitary anyway.
Yeah.
That's not my intention, right, okay? I'm just saying, I think we have to look at this in a little more objective way. Or we have to say, we're gonna go to the community. Because if you look at this project, the four five million dollar project in twenty nineteen. And today it's gonna be more. How much more we will go. Or it could be less. So if we're looking at a six million dollar project. There is no realistic way that the health issue of finance and. At a time, within the next twenty years.
So so that.
And then we go to my art, sorry.
So.
Stages of this project, and maybe it's a fifteen year. So so we're.
And that's kind of those sorts of things, you know, and looking at the plan. For this one, it was just the north. Origin and about one point five million to start there, that being felt that that's gonna. Help with a lot of erosion to the south of there, so that was a, gonna make more sense.
Right, this is, this seems like it's still on the right path. And. Could we? In parallel, because we know we have to look for funding, so in parallel, could we? Determine the priorities? If they, if they match the twenty nineteen priorities? Are they different? And could we pursue? Could we talk with friends? Could we? So so. I'm gonna finish, uh. Could we talk with friends to see about? Funding, yeah, and and maybe private funding as well. But I also wanna ask the source, um the grant that you are, that we've already applied for, would. That study still suffice as to say this is still good?
For that north section.
Okay, for the north section, okay.
Section, it would, so. I, the priorities are difficult, because if you ask the community, we might say, salsa, that's most important, let's do that. And because that's what we love, that's what we use, and that's what they got of it. But then the engineer might come back and say, no, more, you know, salad is the most important, because that's what's gonna help. Down the road, you know, we were starting to get some of that uh. The that concrete debris to the middle, you know, our center. Part of the beach getting past the dog, which has been totally overtaken. You know, with that, it's slowed down, um because the water levels are down. Uh there's different. Perspectives, when I talked to, again, Lake Forest and Lake and in Highland Park, you know, in in Highland Park said, well, because erosion. The water levels down, the erosion slowed down, we're not really putting money into it right now, because it's less of a problem. I talked to Lake Forest, they said, well, we're we're doing it now because it's cheap, but then it, they have less work. The contractor, so, and we have the money, so we're gonna still do some of those.
And when the water levels are low, it seems to me that would be the time. To do some task, yeah, yeah.
So when you get higher, you're actually protecting.
I don't, I'm not concerned about the communities. I'm word this diplomatically, the community's um opinion on, because they're not. Many are not educated, but I'm more interested in what the engineers have to say, if it is North Beach, and that's what we. We should start for the following reasons that you have stated. I will say this, though, because this is our shiny example of. Nobody wants to fund, uh, nobody goes out there to see a two point seven million dollar search tank. They go out there to see a two point seven million dollar. Beautiful concrete structure of our concession standbooks now and everything else, so they feel like if it's gonna go to the community. Or, you know, even just to. Talk about it, whether we're funding it internally or referendum, Scott, I mean, something.
Yep. Something exciting.
Yes, something exciting. Because that's, I mean, going through this, there was a a an island approach, you know, can we just dump a lot of rubble out there to an island? It's not gonna be swivelable, it's not gonna be usable, but it's gonna be out there, and it's gonna affect the sand in here. Well. Do you wanna fund a four million dollar island that nobody uses?
Do we think we would want to go to referendum for this?
Yeah, well, it's way too early, don't know that.
Well, dumb question, how much do we, how much do we borrow about?
Well, I mean, yeah, not all of us.
Cause we're we're figuring this out, I mean, what do you? Is it eight, yeah, seven, eight million dollars, if we do.
To do everything.
Yeah, to do everything, yeah.
If we used our non-referent. And this is an exact figure, because you have inflation and so on. But if we use our non-referent levy power. To do the project would take twenty years. And it would take all of our non-referent borrowing asked for.
Yeah.
Over twenty.
So that's hoping nothing else goes wrong. And saying things well or things are bad.
I'm just curious.
Rapparament is. Not gonna be popular, I think we as a board, that is our last resort.
Really, so it's. We, we gotta do so.
Oh, we need more information, so we do, so. Well, I mean, I think it's too early to even consider it, yeah, no. So where do you want the Parks and Beach Committee to go? Or do you, what do you want them to do? I would like them to. Okay, maybe in this order, is to. Get an updated quote. On so on project dollars. Um, to maybe verify that those priorities. Still remain.
Probably everyone on the committee and the board to. I mean, I need to, I need to read that. To to read this study that was already done, like we should all be able to speak.
And please, why am, because you're on this committee.
I I deserve the, the point I made, which is that Highland Park and Lake Forest. Protected their beach based on engineering studies like that. And yet you saw what happened in twenty nineteen, that's why I want to revisit the plan in light of what happened in twenty nineteen, have there been? Is there been advanced thinking on how to protect the shoreline ever again?
Okay.
Cause that study's prior to twenty nineteen.
So so you may be in favor of getting an updated study?
I wanna. Personally, I wanna look at in light of what happened in twenty nineteen to Highland Park and Lake Forest. What did they do? What, you know, and and? What should we do differently?
And, yeah, I would imagine it would be tweaks to. Yes, but still getting, I think still valuable to get idea about how costs have changed since. Well, and also with that, it is frustrating, it's like, well, why bother? To admit, it goes away, but we don't know what would have happened there if they, they didn't have anything to start with, if they hadn't done the projects competitively, then.
Right.
But yeah.
So that you're not only. But yeah, I'd like to, I'd love a reader.
On the website.
On the website. And should we, can we or should we? Look to other Lake Michigan towns? I mean, we did North Shore. I don't know, that may help. And and I guess that's just it, I mean, you could look to other areas and. To see what they do, I just, I just went with our immediate neighbors. But. So could you add that, though, maybe? Yeah, to, so look toward, when I thought look toward, went out, anyone who's uh. A major on there to see what they've done. But I'm thinking to. Wisconsin, Michigan. I thought I want to give the committee a lot of work, and just wanting, I'm wanting to be thorough about. Our research. We're hopeful in saying, well, clearly within a five year time, we'll have time, right? We're like gonna bang it out and get some data within the next five years.
I think it's fine to have that call.
Yeah.
If we're, if we're not gonna go for a referendum. What I'm saying and. In agreement with Tim. Is that we, I think we'd be better off looking at a plan. That kind of recognizes how much money you wanna spend. Rather than saying we wanna spend everything. But just a part of it now. Would it be better to find something where we say we can spend three million dollars?
So is that the finance committee takeaway? How much can we spend?
That's one of the things for absolutely, absolutely. And then say, given three million dollars, what can we do?
Yeah, I agree, but no matter what, it seems to me.
And it may not be. This plan may not. It may not be taking this plan apart and saying, this is a priority, it may be different.
Yeah, great.
That creates different structures, but for three million, they're pretty good protection.
So.
And then if ten years from now, fifteen years from now, the board wants to add to it. Go ahead, but.
So figure out how much we can spend internally. Biggest bang for our buck with that. And then as an alternative, this is what we'd have to, this is what the referendum would look like.
And that's where you need your committee to say, okay, we can, we can do this for apps. And not even watch for a random, this is what we can't do, this is what we can't do.
Yeah, we're gonna max out everything internally, there's something offshore that you can't even tell. Right, it should be.
And and this is just because. You know, looking at our partners on this, we're not gonna get any money. Or show our application. Right. We're not gonna get any money from the village, yeah, anything to village wise, it would be. Yeah, cause we had a port with a brand that came. Through the village, but it was for the trades, you know, transferred to us. So I'm going to do what's up with this, um, okay, so. Have a look at the study. Update this, see if there's anything, you know, what the cost would be to update the study. Um, and then certainly we can't. The biggest impact going on. And what we're doing potentially do over the next five years. Anything else?
I I think one of the things. That we may, your committee may want. Do you want to eliminate the dog beach?
They didn't want some.
Well, A E com said that it's gonna cost a million dollars. To do the dog.
Yeah.
Do we feel it's worth? Spending a million dollars of the community's money? On a dog beach?
I look at it from the sense of, okay. When they talk about the coves or the cells. Because we own that property, we own or um even beyond that. I would look to the engineer. To say, where do you put your? Breakwater, your investment, or whatever it is, and where do you have the greatest impact going down?
Yeah, I agree.
We may, it may still be a rough filled dog beach, and we may just, like, you have some say in that, but it's. Right, you know, do we, do we start it after dog beach before dog beach, or where we do, I think. Right, and that's where the priorities come in, it could be that that falls to the bottom, and we don't do anything with dog beach, yeah.
Provided it doesn't, I just thought of abandoning it and getting it to a point where, like your first slide. So hopefully, once it gets to the third level, then you can prepare that, so, you know, maybe to maintain it, but not. Maybe not spend a bunch of money to beautify it, to get it to.
I mean, do we spend that much time on the land on beach other than like now saving?
No, I mean, repair the fence. Quite a few times on the highway, but.
It looks fine now, yes, it's adequate dog beach for sure, and you make six grand off of it, so. For sure, yeah, well, yeah, you know, she, she has, so before the guards got there, everyone was on. North, anyway, they're not at the dog beach with their rocks. Just saying.
I hate to get this.
And then they can dog in the north on a leash.
I even threw my.
Again, I think part, part of everything was to fix what's happened to the side of the door. And we're gonna actually take the debris and put that and encapsulate it within the armor stone. For that not wall, so, you know, to to make that. Then you don't have to haul the debris off, you save some money there and it helps with more. You know, substance in that armored stone wall.
I have, I have a question for Stan. I'm looking at the numbers from our budget. And in twenty eighteen, we had twenty two thousand seven hundred thirty five resident visits to the beach. Last year, we had seven thousand five hundred fifty. And that trend has been going, well, went from twenty two to fourteen, seventeen. But then it's been two, twenty three, twenty four, it's gone down, and this year it's seven thousand. So far, with just a few weeks left, a month left. Why the trend? Why is that happening?
Going down?
Yeah.
I guess you're looking at numbers, you're looking at comparing what year.
He said eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, we had twenty two thousand.
Downward trend after the beach task force was. The community beach group was born, because we tracked everything differently. It wasn't, uh, that was the one thing that came out, was tracking the utilization, people coming down there. We used to have. Now you scan, you scan everybody's pass, or we, when you come in with your driver's license, they, they put in a P R O C system. Before, we didn't do that. That's not how it was contracted, so it 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 was. Inaccurate.
Do you think it's more of a tracking issue than anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, not an actual huge decline.
Was there, was there anything from the task force that limited the numbers of people going to the beach, any? Changes and procedures and charges and? Well, I don't think we changed, uh, on like the whole rates order. We changed, uh, how we keep track, uh, I think kind of. I can pass this around, it's not, I, I print before meetings. Just in case questions like this come up, but this is like our new tracking system, and I. So here, but it it. I did it from when the beach over there, actually, I did it from eight first till now, because, you know. Um, how many people have come in or rent the beach? Now, there was a big decline in, I think, in twenty twenty during COVID. We had another to find during that time. So that was, yeah, it was intentionally. Limited, but. Yeah. And that was for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So it's a little misleading, uh, I mean, last year we had more notice of instead we got our. Then we got our hat. That was, that was a trend of work.
It's just interesting, you know, it would be, you know, if you could take a look at these numbers. And just see, um, you know, what they're trying to beat, because if it. You know, if we're getting fewer residents out there, then it may affect how much we, um, different cells.
Yeah.
I don't.
What if we made the change in twenty eighteen, how we were doing operational, keeping track of everything?
We can also see one person beach then to. What about you? What about, what about you? Do you think there's other priorities? Miss, this committee chairman? Yeah, I would, I would like to look at the, um. Ecological statement of can we use something that would be. Tractive. From, uh. A bird, fish. Visual standpoint, from the sense of how could it help the beach, how could it help? The environment, how could it help? Um, attract people's interest in. Without any, you know, there, there's a pure option, without any of all here, and how how do we look at something like that, just? Would it really be available? Does that help with erosion, or it's mainly to attract people? It was there for the erosion issue, yeah, it was, they, they looked at whole session on there, yeah, but it also, they did it with the intention of saying this is going to attract. Uh, there are terms, this is what it would be, the fish sanctuary. Do you, that's kind of, the, the funny part about it is that when you look at the pier, that was out there before, that was a little bit of the chatter. You know, what people said is that we fished on there, and you know, kids would use it, it's a hideout, it's expensive, they, yeah, I think it's. Did you have a question last?
Yeah, and then, and then.
That's just, that's mine.
Yeah.
One of the things we were in this last grant submission, for the planning for the. For the grant of the funding, um, that was added, some of that, you know, the doom grass, fish habitat, bird. And that was added to that, it was a thought that that helps them, and finds some points to during the application process to add some of that. Natural habitat. If it was erosion only, it would just be, you know, armors, maybe some of the doom grass. You know, on, on the beach, but not, not the fur or fish.
Which, you know, we eliminate dog beach because if you get dogs under close access, especially, who knows? It's too powerful to be.
Each file ball doesn't count.
Well, we could, we could build up the, uh, the meek, uh, habitat, it would be. Settle meat down there, and you had the, the meat massacre one time, well, I got a hold of some of the. The meats, uh. And it was a nice.
Got a hold of what?
Meats, meats, there were like.
We had meat better down there.
Yeah.
Yes, if you're out there at night. You can see little dark creatures kind of gambling around in the rocks that he can do, that's where, yeah, the meat live up there. But we can't, they're probably disgusting, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Okay, so we, we can go in and do it and start looking at how to. Address this, but I think it's. I, I agree. Completely with fault from the sense of from a stewardage standpoint, something we are trying to do. And it's something that we wanna do because we wanna keep the beach there. Are you down a committee, are we down a committee member, and do we need to recruit? Yeah. Yes, one, so we need, we need, yes, one additional. Okay, any questions?
So you have this, I was fifteen.
I'll, I'll, I'll do it again to do this, I know, you know, well, we need to meet again, we need to do that, we need to address the. Dog park application too, um, and probably it's about something about the beach yesterday.
No, I, I think. I hope. My fellow commissioners agree that this is important, and that we have to devote. Sufficient time, both as a committee and as a board.
Yeah, like, that's, I mean, huge values to this meeting, just with the newborn saying, this is, yeah, very good one. For the record, I want to keep the dog beach.
Yeah, I can.
I can say a long, I can say it.
Yes, yeah, I'll, 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 it's like, too, because, um. During COVID, it was wonderful to listen to books on tape, go down to the beach all the time, if you ever get the chance to read the, the death, the life of the great lakes by Dan Keegan. Um, Sue Raymore was the one who recommended it to me, um. When you go down to the beach and you've been a long term resident, you've been a long term resident, you know the difference of. When you go down to the beach and you've been a long term resident, you've been a long term resident, you know the difference of going down there, and you choose to. When you go down there, and it used to be so murky, and now you can see your toes, you can see out there, you can see how clean the beach is, it's not supposed to. It's all the stuff that's been run in there, um. And when you see the picture, I really was tempted to buy a stuffed lamprey needle to bring it. So they can each know what the little suckers look like and everything else. But I said, what am I gonna do then? I'm a future grandchild, and I'm not gonna give it a twenty two dollar stuff.
I see.
But, yeah.
I just can take it.
It is a great book, because it talks about. Um, introducing the fish, uh, the the trout and salmon there for sport fishing, which weren't there before, um. And it's fun to go out and do that for a day, of course, you don't want to eat everything you catch, um, but, um. It talks about why our our beach looks like it does now, and why our lake looks like it does now, because of everything that we introduced and everything that we've produced and taken out of them. So.
So can I make a suggestion about the committee, say, you know how we have bumped up another committee member in the hall? Yeah, we we look for more than one for this committee, since it's so important, and are we going out? And soliciting community members who may be interested, like we did before with other committees? Thanks for more than just the standard three, yeah.
Because once you want to bump it up, you do have to have that, that's, we, you need one more person to be there for it as well, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I.
And and they brought in some problems in with making them larger. Past, I know there's been some concerns. Um, so, I mean, that that's just been the, you know, the past. History is that, that, you know, two commissioners of three citizen member. This worked out very well, thanks.
Yes, but we've already made that exception. With a dog.
Yeah, and we've made it before and had some issues with that, you know, that's what I'm saying, so, yeah, go on the way, I think it depends on the committee. Uh. But, uh.
Okay, well, maybe that gets out, so how are we recruiting? That's down there.
Probably the same way we did before, is to ask for. People to do that, I.
To do applications.
Yeah, and I probably would like to go to each one as well, or. Uh, if they ever succeed, you know, with anybody, which.
And have, have we publicly done that? That, okay, so that's, that's also. Um, and then maybe we decide, because we see what goes, who comes in as. As a good committee member.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Good start.
Yeah, great start, thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Lots more, please.
Thank you. What else we need?
I I just, I I wanna. Reiterate, I think it's really important we do something, I think it's, do something smart, not just do something. Um. But I think we've, we've passed the point where. We should just be. Standing around waiting for another horrible storm to destroy the beach. Um. And we have to recognize what we can do, what we're prepared to do, I don't disagree with you about referendum, period. I think it'd be very tough to go with the community. And ask for five or six million dollars. Um. And then when they turn it down, what do you do? So I'd rather.
But the one thing, if you did that, you know, you're crying, you know, the board takes the direction and went that direction, community said, no. Well, we don't have it, we need to go do it else ourselves, so. If this, the community has said it's not a priority. Terms of funding and approving a referendum, then. You can only do what you can do within your means of funding it yourself. Which is a very scaled back version of what needs to be done.
Yeah, that's. Well, fair and valid argument. Absolutely, if the community agrees with us. They'll vote to support a referendum, if they don't agree with us, then. However, that's.
That's not, I'll say.
Tough one. So I think it's something we're gonna need to have community meetings, so I think we're gonna have to open this up to the community. And and hear from them as well.
So, let's give it a little time first, yes.
I think we need to go look for it.
Okay.
Harry's ready.
Harry's ready.
Harry's ready.
Let's be ahead. Um, there is nothing else on the U channel, there are no other points. No people to name. Uh, please have a question to me, for sure.
So moved.
Second.
All of them, or?
I.
Okay.
Thank you, all of them.
Thanks, everyone.